Hey folks, as we had mentioned with school getting started back, you know, the all of the excitement that comes with that and making new friends and getting reacquainted with your old friends and learning things new, you know, it does create some challenges for some families during this school year. And our Paulding County Animal Shelter, they have partnered up with a Buddy's Hope. And what this is, is for the month of August and September, they are waiving the adoption fees if you will bring in some food items that will be donated. And this is stuff like mac and cheese and pudding cups, you know, cereal bars, stuff like this. And what, where this is going to go is going to help the backpack program for Herschel Jones Middle School and Paulding County High School. This is going to guarantee that these students, that on the weekends and the holidays, they're still going to be able to have a nutritious meal and they're, they're not going to miss a breakfast or a lunch or whatever the case may be. So for the month of August to September at the Paulding Animal Shelter, all adoption fees are waived if you bring these food items. And we appreciate them partnering with a Buddy's Hope to do this, to help all of our students out here in Paulding County at these two schools. Everyone knows that there is a ton of history in Paulding County. And on the second Saturdays at the Paulding History Museum, now that is located at 295 North Johnston Street, that's in the parking lot or off to the side there of Herschel Jones Middle School, the little red schoolhouse. Show up that afternoon and there's going to be some Cherokee legends and storytelling that will take place. You'll get a little, little insight into how that the Cherokee, how they played a part in our history and made them, who made us who we are today. So plan on joining the Cherokee Legends and Storytelling on August the 9th from 1:00 to 2:00. Now, if you want after that to finish planning your day, that afternoon at Veterans Park, that's at 240 Constitution Boulevard, there's going to be a movie under the stars that will be taking place. Mufasa will be showing, the activities will start at 7:00 PM and the movie will start at sundown. So finish your day out after you've got that history lesson and kick back with the family and the friends, bring your lawn chairs, your picnic basket and set back and relax under the stars and watch Mufasa that day. We're moving right on through the month of August and we are at August the 16th. You talk about jam packed. That morning, I want you to go out to Pickett's Mill. This is at 4432 Mount Taber Church Road and go to Pickett's Mill and they are having a day in the life of the, of the Confederate soldier. You'll be able to speak with the reenactors that put on the, the reenactment shows that they're at the park and be able to ask some questions. What was it like a day in the life of a soldier that in the battle that took place right there at Pickett's Mill? We told you, there's a ton of history here in Paulding County and we want you to take advantage of that. So plan on being at Pickett's Mill on August the 16th and I know you're really going to enjoy that. Now that afternoon, we're going to make you have to make a decision here. You're going to have to decide what you want to do, who you like. If you are into Pete Floyd, Interstellar Echoes is going to be performing at the historic Dallas Theater on Main Street in downtown Dallas. And they will be starting, I believe that show is from 7:00 to 9:00. And the ticket prices is $25. Early price on those tickets is $23 and a discount. So please get your tickets for Interstellar Echoes for the Pete Floyd Tribute Band. Know you're going to have a great time. And hey, when that one sells out, then there's also another concert at 240 Constitution Boulevard, back at Veterans Park. And that is going to be the Glow Band, the Eagles Tribute Band. They're going to be performing here in the park under the stars. So go ahead and bring your family, bring your blankets, your chairs and get ready to take that, that ride on that dark desert highway with the Eagles Tribute Band. The activities will start that evening at 7:00 PM and the concert will start exactly at 8:00 PM. So you've got a lot to choose from in the month of August and that day. I know you're excited and plan your day accordingly, but take in some of these events. We know you're going to enjoy.
Good afternoon. Hey Charlie, that's my buddy over there. Elected officials, I think we have Sheriff Henson, anybody else that I don't know. Yes, we see Jim over there. Stand up and tell us who you are and what, what, what are you elected to?
I'm Jim Henson. I'm elected to work for the city of Alabama. I'm a mayor pro king.
Ashley, you want to get up?
I'm Ashley Henson and I am the sheriff of Paulding County. That's my dad. If he acts up, we're going to call him by the name.
People overruled each other, you know? Oh, that's wonderful. Well, I'll call this to meeting if I can get the marshal to bring up the sheet. I'd appreciate it. And as he's doing that, if I can remind you to cut your phones off and put them on silent or vibrate so we won't have any interruptions. Mr. Jamie Hobbs, a lot about you. Thanks for coming back to us and having our prayer and stuff like that. We're going to have you pray in a minute, but before we do that, I want you all to stand. We've got the, the Paulding County High School Junior JR OTC coming in. So they are, see if you can get them to.
Right, face. Present, arms. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. About, face. Post, colors. Seat, colors. Present, arms. Order, arms. About, face. Forward, march. Right, face. Forward, march.
Jamie, podium, your body blessed us.
Thank you, sir. It's my pleasure to be able to come here and open us in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity. We have to come into this place that is designed, ordained, and blessed by you. We pray that everyone here understand why we're here. We pray that we also understand that you're here. Where two or more gathered in your name, there you are in their midst and so you are here as well. And we thank you for allowing us safety to come in this dreary weather that we've been having, safely to arrive here. We thank you for that blessing. We pray for continued blessings as we leave. We pray that you would bless this time in order. We pray that you would bless this time in familial love and community. We ask that you would bless each and every elected official here, that you would bless those who are standing before us as they are given authority from you to act in a way becoming to you. We pray now as we go through this time that you would give us your blessing as we stay faithful to your calling. And it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Jamie, thank you so much. How's your three boys doing?
They're doing awesome. Thank you, sir.
How's Katie? You keeping her straight?
She's keeping me straight.
Oh, that's even better.
We ate chickens, our sister.
Ate chickens. You've been at New Hope, what, five and a half years?
Yes, sir.
Heard some good things about you.
I appreciate it.
Keep up the good work. Did you catch any big fish lately?
No.
No, you hadn't been fishing. I knew you liked to fish though.
I would love to.
Good to have you. If y'all ever been by his church, he has a, a light out there that blinks and people ask him, you need to fix, get another light bulb. He said, no, that brings more people to my church. That's called my blinking Jesus. So he keeps that light blinking so everybody will ask. Good to have you, buddy. Thank you again.
I appreciate it.
Just a reminder that the minutes are, we read on this morning, it's from July the 22nd, 2025, the work session, the board meetings, also the public hearing meetings and the 6:30 PM, the meetings. So if you've had a chance to review it, so I wouldn't like to have a motion to accept those minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Caker. And is there a second?
Second.
Have two seconds. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Galloway, all approve, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. At this time, we don't have any announcements, so no invited guests. Bid awards will start off. The first one was action to award the 2025 Asphalt Project Contract Five to the lowest reliable bidder. That would be Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated in the amount of $4,46,485. Project includes 11.04 miles of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mixed resurfacing on three county roads and 22 streets and, and one subdivision. Funding for this project will be from the Georgia Department of Transportation, LRA grant of $2,723,270.21 with the remaining balance allocated from the general funds in Sploes. Roads are located in post one and in post four. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next, we have action to approve the purchase of two, 2026 Elf 750 dump trucks from Hardy Family Ford utilizing the state contract pricing in the amount of $108,344 each, $344,000 each. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Snyder and all in favor, aye?
Aye.
No opposed. Next, we'll, action to approve the purchase of an Elf 150 PB, PPV from Hardy Family Ford utilizing the state contract pricing in the amount of $50,760,000 for the sheriff's office. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Ms. Galloway, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Caker, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Action to approve the purchase of an F-350 Transit van from Hardy Family Ford utilizing the state contract pricing in the amount of $56,450,000 at, no, I'm sorry, $56,450 and no cents for the sheriff's office. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Caker. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next is action to approve the purchase through the state contract pricing of three F-250s in the amount of $174,336.60 and two F-350s in the amount of $154,911 from Hardy Family Ford for DOT, the sheriff's office, and water and sewer. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Mr. Snyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Galloway. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Reports, we don't have any reports from any committee or departments at this time. Public participation on agenda items, there are none at this time. Consent items, there are actually six. You can actually read those, all six of them. And what I need is a motion to approve those six items. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Approved. Okay. Old business, there's none. New business. Action to adopt resolution 2025-22, adopting the county MNO millage rate at 4.30 mills. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Snyder, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll pick Ms. Caker, okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Action to adopt resolution 2025-23, adopting the bond millage rate of .80 mills. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next is action to adopt resolution 2025-24, adopting the fire tax millage rate at 2.10 mills. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Caker, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Next is action to adopt resolution 2025-25, adopting the county school tax millage rate at 17.675 mills. Do I have a motion to accept? No motion to accept? So I don't have to have a second?
I'll bite the bullet and make a motion to accept the rate with an editorial comment that we can either vote yes or no, we're not allowed to change it. But that's a motion to accept the rate.
That's a motion to. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
You'll second it? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay. Next is action to adopt resolution 2025-26, authorizing the tax commissioner to retain at a 2.09% fee for the collection of school tax. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Mr. Dunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Galloway. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Next is action to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget. I need a motion to accept that budget.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next is action to authorize the chairman to enter into the right of way mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for PI number 0013950. That's at SR 61 at Dabs Bridge Road intersection improvement project. Roundabout and realignment of Dabs Bridge Road. This project is located in post four. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Snyder, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Next is action for the Board of Commissioners to adopt resolution 2025-27, acquisition of real property for the corridor improvement along SR 101 from Crossroads Church Road to the Golden South Parkway. It's at PR SR 101, 947-1, the PI number 0019669. This project is located in post two. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Caker, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next is action for the Board of Commissioners to adopt resolution 2025-28, acquisition for real property for, for the SR 120 connector, so higher Masoudi Road, Davis Mill Road North and Davis Mill Road South intersection improvement project, SR IMP 290 SR 120 connector dash one. Project is located in post one and in post three. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dunn, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next is action to authorize the chairman to execute options to purchase right of way for the sale of property in partial 77 partial ID 031-2, not dash, dot 2, dot 016, dot 0000 in the amount of $157,000, partial 94, dash partial ID 011, dot 3, dot 4, dot 027, dot 000 in the amount of $85,000 and partial 96, partial ID 011, dot 3, dot 4, dot 026, dot 0000 in the amount of $140,000 of the Senior Crest Road widening project, the PI 0013700. Funding will be from the Sploes with reimbursement up to $5 million from the federal government. The project is located in post one and in post four. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, before there's a motion, just to clarify, partial 77, that price is $150,000.
What did I say?
You actually said 157, but it's 150,000.
150,000. Okay. Make that correction. With that correction, is there a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
To approve by Mr. Dunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Snyder, all in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
Okay, next, action to approve the emergency purchase and installment of a 16-inch insert valve with HD excavation and utility in the amount of $64,250. This purchase is funded through the renewal and extension fund and is located in post one. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dunn, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Snyder, all in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
Next is action to approve the KISS annual service, services. What did I say? I say something wrong?
Nothing. I'm thinking about Virginia. I'm sorry.
What, when you say kiss, you're thinking about Virginia?
Don't go there.
Never mind. I won't go there. Action to approve the KISS annual service and support agreement with Kendall Supply Company, Inc. in the amount of $63,250. This purchase is funded through the general funds. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Caker, all in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
Next is action to adopt resolution 2025-29, confirm an executive session for the purchase of real estate. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Snyder, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next, we'll go over the Paulding County Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission recommendations from July the 22nd of 2025, August the 12th of 2025 at the Board of Commissioners. The first one is 20-25-11-Z, application by Kirk and Heather Knutts, I believe how you pronounce that, requesting to rezone 29.73 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R2 Suburban Residential Districts for the purpose, proposed future development of two single home families for their two kids and their families. Property is located in Land Lot 758 and 827, District 18, Section 3, south side of Thomas Road, west of Raccoon Creek Road. That's in post four. The recommended approval was 5, 1, and 1. The owner developer agrees to develop.
I was going to say, there's two written stipulations.
Do I have to read them?
No, I just said two written stipulations.
Two written stipulations. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with the two written stipulations.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next is 2025-12-Z, application by Integrity Development Group, LLC, requesting to rezone 31.94 acres from a B2, which is Highway District District, Highway Business District, to an R55 active adult residential districts for the purpose of addition of approximately 81 active adult residential lots to an adjacent, to adjoining the R55 development. Property is located in Land Lot 317. Property is located in landlot 317, 318, and 389, and 390, District 1, Section 3, north side of the Georgian Parkway, west of Villarica Highway, which is SR 61, and south of Mulberry Rock Road, and it's all in post two. Recommended approval was 6, 0, to 1, with 1, 2, 3, 4 stipulations?
Six.
Huh?
Six.
I may have said, and there's more. I was flipping the page. Six stipulations. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve with the six stipulations.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That's conclusion of regular business, public participation on non-agenda items, there are none. The executive session, we don't have any of that, so we, I will make the recommendation to adjourn. Is there a second?
Checking.
Can we make announcements?
Yes. Make announcements.
I have a quick announcement. Thank you, sir. I have a quick announcement, and that is that I misspoke this morning because I said if you, and this is out to the general public, if you need an exemption, like for elderly or homestead or whatever, now you go to the Board of Assessors, not to the Tax Commissioner. You could go to the Tax Commissioner, but they would just send you to the Board of Assessor. So go on to them if you need to get any kind of exemption taken care of for your property tax.
Any other announcements or comments? And now, I'll make the recommend... Yes, can he talk? Sorry.
Sir. Sir, this is actually not an opportunity to address the board, but after the meeting's over, feel free to come up and talk.
Well, he hasn't adjourned yet.
Well, there is a designated time for visitors to speak, and that has actually passed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Can I talk to you after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And me or anybody up here?
Quick question. Was there a petition in your paperwork?
I don't know what you're referring to about a petition, but I'll be glad to talk with you after the meeting, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So again, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Thank you, second, Mr. Snyder.
Sure.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, and you can come up here and ask us any question you want.